Will everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted on. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tap into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Here.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Here.
Mr. Shoner.
Here.
Mr. Mandala.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. Good evening. I want to apologize first for us being so late. Everybody's time is valuable and we apologize and... Well, we're just sorry. Sometimes things happen. So, committee reports?
Who can I blame for this one?
It's just... Anybody have any committee reports?
I think the eyes usually go this way.
No, no, that's...
Really?
Well, I don't want to steal your, you know, Mr. Featherman's colorblind stuff, so...
Is there a superintendent's report?
Oh, there's a superintendent's report.
Is there?
Yeah, there is.
There's gotta be one.
Yeah, where is?
There is. Really?
Pictures.
Alright, so moving on. You don't have anything, really?
No, no, other than South End, you know, South End FSA installed new officers. I wasn't at it because we were at the retirement dinner for that entire recognition dinner for the employees.
It was a lovely dinner.
It was a lovely dinner. It was very nice at El Tulipano. And, um, no, but I know that FSA in South End has new officers.
Got it. North End too.
North End too.
Alright. Oh, good. Alright, well, I attended the middle school FSA meeting last week and basically it was just kind of a wrap-up of year-end stuff. One thing is they don't actually have new officers yet. They are looking for new officers, but as of right now, they don't have any. And then, one thing I just wanted to point out because the president, Maria, had given just a wonderful speech, kind of thanking everybody, you know, who helped and everything. And I just want to say that this, you know, volunteering isn't easy and putting yourself out there isn't easy. And a lot of times, it's a very, very thankless job, as, you know, a lot of you in the audience know. And we just want to thank everybody who donate their, who donate all of their time because none of what happens in the district could happen without everybody donating a lot of their time. And we really appreciate that, especially at the end of the school year. So, thank you to everybody who, you know, does all, everything to make it possible. We do appreciate that, so... Alright, moving on. So, I think we are gonna go a little bit out of order on this. We are gonna...
That's okay. If Dr. Labrera's okay with that, we'll recognize our student athletes first and then...
Because they have to get home and study for their exams, because that's what you're all going home to do, right? As soon as you leave here, you're gonna study for your exams, right? Exactly. So, we want you out of here quickly.
I like the way we gave them a choice, too.
Yeah, there was a choice.
Alright, so first, I think I'm gonna call up Mr. Gorgody and you can tell me who we're gonna recognize first? Okay. I'm coming right, absolutely. I'm gonna. We have this down.
Good evening. I just want to welcome everyone. After each season, I like to, we like to recognize all of our championship teams and student athletes and, as you can see, we had a really good, successful spring season with this packed house here. So, I'm gonna start out with some of our championship teams and I'm gonna call each player up to be recognized and things like that. I want to start with our boys lacrosse team, who this year won the New Jersey Interscholastic Lacrosse League Hurst Division with a division record of 7-0.
Wow!
This is a pretty big deal. It's our first lacrosse championship since we've started. We're in our, we just finished our second varsity season. I do want to congratulate especially, especially these juniors and seniors who've, who've kind of started this program. Four years ago, we kind of spent two years as a JV program and we've come a long way in a short period of time. So, I want to congratulate them on that. The boys lacrosse team and the boys tennis team, which I'm gonna talk about in a second, are gonna be bumped up a little bit in, in divisions. And that's always, I'm kind of always proud about that because it's showing we're having success. We're going to the next level. We're kind of stepping up and things like that. So, congratulations to you guys on that. So, starting with our boys lacrosse seniors, Joe Amati. Carlos Cabrera. Andrew Candino. Mackenzie Kniff. Alex Lopresti. Nick Lopresti. Joe Moreno. Jordan Amati. Mario De Senna. Nick Anan. Justin Gray. A- Ayana Kohn. James Johnson. Peter Johnson. Nick Mega. John Shahada. Tyler Ulrich. Matt Vitale. Ryan Catanzerite. Aiden De Senna. Vin Giovannelli. And Mo Guarino. And Coach Dave Bocino.
We can block that screen. Yes, we can block that. Yes. How do we shut it? Angel? Usually put something right in front of it. I think it's still in the way, right? The actual screen itself? I mean, this thing. Dave, is there a way to pull that further or no?
Okay, next up is our boys tennis team, who just won the Super Essex Conference Colonial Division with a division record of 12-0. The boys had a great season, finished 14-3. It is their first conference championship since 2011, which, which shows great strides where, where the program was and where it is now. And like I said, they again have been bumped up the division for next year, but they got a nice returning quarterback, which I think is gonna be up to the challenge and, and really gonna keep this thing rolling here. So, congratulations to them on their Super Essex Conference Colonial Division championships. First up, John Hersett. Peter Corso. Dominic Costanzo. Matt Yastiosis. Michael Linav. Hunter Remenko. Steven Zhang. Anthony Avila. And Christian Aparte. I owe you one, alright? And, and Coach Dunn. Okay, next up is a few of our track and field athletes, who, who, these three guys won a state sectional championship, which involves basically a state championship. I know it's not as a team, but I'd like to recognize them for their accomplishments. The first one, the first one up is, is a returning athlete that was here last year. Won both the NJ SIAA North One Group One and the Group One State Championship in the javelin, Sawyer Mo. Mike Pernesi couldn't make it tonight, but I do want to acknowledge him for his North One Group One State Championship in the high jump. He did jump a personal best 6'4" during this meet and moved on to the meet of champions. And last but not least, Pat Smurla, who won the North One Group One State Championship in the 3200 meter run, the two-mile race with a personal best time. He's had a great four years here. So, I'm so proud of him that he reached the goal here and won a state championship, Pat Smurla. I'm gonna call Coach Musab and Coach Bolger, the director of our track and field operations.
That was awesome. That was awesome. I love that you admitted you put it out in the face book so that time I know.
And last but not least, our softball team, who's kind of making this a yearly thing here. And I'm not sure really where to start. Again, this team has been here, I feel like, the last three or four years, but, but they've added a few more things this year. I want to start with their Super Essex Conference American Division Championship, which was the first time we won the division since 2011. In my opinion, it's probably one of the toughest divisions in the state of New Jersey. So, for us to win that with a conference record of 11-1, huge deal. Great job, girls. Also, for the second year in a row and third time in four years, they won the NJ SIAA North One Group One State Championship, which, I mean, I told some of the girls, I told Ava this, I know how hard it is to win a sectional championship in any sport. And I feel like when they won that, that game, it was just another game to them. And, and, and I want them to know that, that it's a huge deal. It's a huge accomplishment. It's winning a state championship. It doesn't happen all the time, so kind of cherish it, keep working towards that. So, congratulations with that championship. And lastly, I think, is, is one of the biggest ones here, is winning the Essex County Tournament Championship for the first time since 2010. And really, our only Essex County Tournament Championship in any sport since then. I think that, as a Group One school in Essex County, is kind of the cream of the crop. And, and to win a county tournament championship in any sport is huge. And these girls did it with that 1-0 win over Mount St. Dominic Academy. So, great job, girls. And lastly, I just want to congratulate our seniors, who just had an outstanding softball career. Two, two Group One State Championships, three sectional state championships, one division championship, and one Essex County Tournament title. So, so great job to those seniors to kind of really set the ball high. Ava Fernandez. Michaela Kennedy. Ava Mandala. Callie McCabe. Kelly Toomey. Blair Adams. Gianna Bocino. Mia Fayet. Ariana Welling. Jules Akala. Alyssa Coletta. Jana Kaboo. Brittany Taylor. Chloe Weinstein. Ryan Canataro. Maria Kelly. Paige Limongello. Katie Peterson. Samantha Ryan. And our coaches, Pete Valardi. Eddie Capasi. Cheryl, Coach Cheryl. And Coach Nikki.
Very demanding, isn't he? Very demanding, aren't we?
Oh, my. Alright. I'm sure most of you plan on staying, but for those of you who don't, we're gonna just have like a two-minute break where those of you who need to go out and study can do so. So, thank you, everybody, for coming. We totally appreciate it.
Where's everybody going?
We can meet in two minutes.
Well, thank you for sticking around.
We're back in session. And that was great, recognizing everybody, and then they left. So, now, we have another presentation. And we have Mr. Labrera, who's here to talk about the strategic planning process that, as a board, we are starting to talk about. So, welcome.
Thank you. What would you like me to do? Stand?
Yeah, for the, for the audience at home, if you could stand with the microphone and...
This is a one-page, very brief, cover. As lean as I can make it. And you want me to talk about...
Yes. Do you, would you want to pull it closer so you can, you can put it on the laptop? Would you want to have me have your paperwork down?
And you want me to talk into the microphone, I assume? Hello? So, we're all set? I don't think it's really my fault that everybody left and I had to stay here. I don't think so. But, that was very impressive, what, what the teams did. A long time ago, a very long time ago, I was a coach. And so, I know what it means to capture what they did. It's very, very impressive. And I think it was the, I think it's the athletic director who was speaking. He was being very modest in saying, "These don't happen very often." That's for sure. That doesn't happen. And it's nice to be able to recognize so many young people who have done so much. Having said that, I was thinking that maybe some of those kids might have been interested in strategic planning. Right. Thank you for the opportunity to at least talk to you about this. I have some experience, some recent experience in strategic planning. And I want to talk a little bit about the basic ideas that I think are important in strategic planning. It starts with the name itself. I mean, we all have plans. Strategic plans are about, largely, the things that you know that you would like to do. And then, how do you build a strategy with many in order to reach that? Never so easy, but still, that is the way to do it. I have referred at times to strategic planning in some school districts as dust collectors. Because in those instances, there are a small number of people who do some work, make some presentation, put together a report, and it sits on a shelf. Unfortunately, there are too many of those. The ones that are not like that are the ones where there is a real important and consistent outreach to people who teach, parents who have children, also, high school students, and, and to some degree, if you think it's appropriate, middle school aged kids. And so, the experience that I have had most recently is that I did the superintendent search in Nutley six years ago. And at the conclusion of that, they, the gentleman who was selected to be the superintendent, an outstanding leader, embarked upon a strategic plan. And he asked me to work with him. And that was a terrific experience because he had been involved in it before. And so, what we did in that first year is meet with many people, talking about the things that seem to matter most in the district, whether they are in place or whether you hope to have them. And we started with a small group. The group got bigger. And as we talked about it, the part of it that really started to make a big difference is we engaged the community, which meant that we didn't have those parents of school-aged children. We had people who lived in the community who didn't have children in school, but had a real stake in the direction of the school. And so, what we did in that first year is we had many meetings. We struggled with ideas. And when you have many groups together, it is never easy. But when you are consistently asking people for, "What do you think and why do you think that? And what does that mean?", then you grapple with that. And we got to the point where we had five specific areas. And then, we divided the people in the school, in the administration, and then invited parents and then invited community members. So, that voice was very powerful. That's what you need in things like this. It's voice. You have to give as many representatives of the organizations in the community, whether they're in school or out, they have to have a voice. They have to be able to say, "I have a concern about." What can we do about? Now, on that piece of paper, it talks about the present, but much more importantly, it's the future. It's what you see in your school district that is something of which you are proud, which doesn't mean that you stop there. If you have, for instance, if you have what you had this, this evening, it is not a time to just stop. It's a time to say, "This is terrific what we've done. Do you think we can do still more?" That kind of attitude doesn't produce the dust collector. It never does. And what you don't want in this is a thin, a, a real thick volume that looks like a telephone book in New York City. What you want is, "Here are the things that we have chosen to do, and how we have done it, and the way we have done it." And it was an absolute pleasure to do that kind of work with Russell, who was the, the superintendent and is now in Bridgewater. And it is, again, another. We're, we're in the second five-year plan. And the term that people like me, when they are asked to join a school district in this effort, it is all about facilitation. It is not about telling people, "I think you ought to do this," and, "No, I don't think that's gonna work." You can't do that. And we didn't do that. What we did was listen to one another and then, not just the facilitator, but the people who were in the group began to ask questions of each other. And, and when that starts happening, then you begin to see group thinking in the best sense of the word. Not group thinking in the worst sense of the word. Where, in the worst sense of the word, you have a whole group of people not paying attention to anything, who say, "Yeah, that's a great idea." who say, "Yeah, that's a great idea," and all leave. When you have groups, active groups, who are engaging in that kind of work, it's amazing what happens with that. And it really was. It started out, and I think, well, strategic planning has to be in this. You start with the things that you think are most important, both present and more importantly, future. Why is it important? And the way to, to make it important? What do you do? What is missing? And we had instances where people would stand up and say, "How come we don't have a group called culture?" Which is a very interesting question, because culture has so much to do with every aspect of what you did. Now, unfortunately, that didn't prevail, except it produced a very interesting conversation. Very interesting. So, my interest in strategic planning is especially when you have already had one, is to look at if you decide you would want me to work with you, and it's always work with you in this model, it's always that, has to be that. The beginning is for somebody who wasn't here in the first strategic planning, is to make sure that all the things that were part of the work that you did, and I know you did work for three, was it a three-year period? I know you did that. And I use in this phrase, "You build upon what has been done." Now, building upon what has been done doesn't mean that everything you're building upon was just a wonderful success. Doesn't mean that. It means that you did some work about something that you believed was really important, and you might have come up short in terms of what had happened. That happened to us in Nutley. And, and what it did was get the, the committees and the people to say, "It didn't happen because..." And then, they started talking, "If we had done a little more of this, a little more of that, then maybe we could reach for that." Some of the things that are really important in your strategic planning are aspirational ideas that you may not even get. But it is the chase of that that's really important. And sometimes, you start by saying, "We are seeking this." And then, a year and a half in it, you said, people stepped back and say, "Actually, we wanna be thinking about this." And you want to share that status with people along the way. You don't want to have that be, "Here's the strategic planning, they're gonna have a meeting and report to you at the end of the year." That, that is of no use, really. Because that will ensure that the first meeting you have, you'll have a group of people, your second meeting, you'll have very few. Because they don't wanna know what is the result. They want to know along the way, what you're doing and how you're doing. How do you do that? Well, you call community meetings. We had them. We had some with many people. Because Nutley, if you know anything about Nutley, is a very active community. Very. And so, when we called for meetings, we didn't have a small number of people. And, and the more that it was shared, and the more that we talked to people about it, the more support we had, the more support we obtained. This is a roundabout way of saying, "Strategic planning is really important." Because if you do it the right way, you enlist a lot of people in the future of what matters most. It doesn't cost a tremendous amount of money, it doesn't. And there are people who do this on a regular basis, and many times during the year. That's not me, I don't do that. I only have done a few recently, I've done more at an earlier time, but not now. And, and so, to be asked by the whole community to come and be the facilitator again was, after I was not there for four years, was really a, a very touching moment. It really was. I didn't have a lot to make a lot of money, I didn't get a lot of people buying me coats or anything like that. But, I was there in the middle of July, where we talked about what had been done. And it was a wonderful meeting. The second part was the most important part, because people were then talking about, "Here's the things we're thinking about next." We're not sure of, of what form it's going to be in, but there is a next in this, and we would like to do that. There are lots of ways to do this, there are lots of structures that you can use to do this. Lots of them. You wanna pick the one that makes the most sense to you. Who does it? Who are the people who, who do it? You have to have, at a minimum, if you don't have somebody in your staff who is in charge of this, you have to have somebody like the superintendent, who is the, I mean, is the wrong term, but it's second-in-command kind of thing. You have to have that. The reason why some places don't do it with the principals, I mean, with the superintendent, it's a lot of work, a lot of work. Not that the superintendent doesn't have a lot of work. It's just something to think about when you're doing this. And the, the amount of money that is usually associated with this on the part of outside people, like me, I'm an outside person. And I know some places that have done this really well within some places. You can do it that way. And some have done it the other way. You have to decide what you wanna do, who do you wanna do this with, and how do you wanna do it? But I don't think that this makes any sense in the absence of outreach to community more than once. A lot of information on websites and other things that you're doing, "Here's what we've decided, here's why we did decide it. At this board meeting, we will talk more about this, and you can ask questions." Now, the most important part of what I'm saying starts now. I'm done talking about strategic planning. But I'll be pleased to answer any questions you have. Yes, sir.
I just need your help in grasping, grasping, grasping this whole concept, because I, I see it, I, I guess in one way, I see the strategic planning going in one direction, and then, I don't know if I fully understand how the process works. So, when you're talking about having a meeting, and you're inviting stakeholders from all different aspects, are they a part of it just from the, in just the initial stages to develop ideas of what the superintendent and the district should take on? Or are they part of the entire process from beginning to end? So, that's one question. And then, the second question is, or is it maybe the vision of the superintendent and the board of what some of the ideas they'd like to see in the strategic plan, and bring those ideas to the stakeholders and discuss that? Or it can be a combination of both? So, that's sort of where I'm trying to see how the process works.
Sure, sure, let me try to give you a short answer to that. You have to, when you're starting the next strategic plan, whether it's the first one or the second or the third, you have to start with a small group of people. And you have to have that small group of people make reference, and in your case, make reference to what you've done. And then, talk about that integrative kind of thing, when you start thinking about that stuff. And then, you do concentric circles. Start with that, get it bigger, get it bigger, get it bigger. Because as you're getting it bigger, you have the ability to start refining what you're doing. Because otherwise, if you don't refine things, if you don't condense things, then you're all over the place. And then, you have so many wonderful ideas, but nothing gets done, because nobody can do all of that stuff. So, the answer to your question is all of the above. Except, it doesn't mean you start here, and when that's done, you're done, somebody else comes. It's all invitational. You've started with us, we would like you to continue with us. We don't all have the same role, but once you start with us, you are a member of this in some form. The more people you have in that, the better off you are. Vision is the real word in this. It's the real act in this. Where are you going, and why are you doing that? Is this more important than this? What are we, what are we going to have if we do this well? Is it worth more time of that than this? That kind of matter. So, it's not two people, three people, four people, make up the whole thing, and then have one meeting and tell everybody. And then, there is something said like, "And we'll let you know what happens." No. What you do is you build that concentric circle, and then, the concentric circle we had in some instances, we had a hundred people at meetings.
Wow.
It did.
And it didn't get crazy with all different ideas and all different input and all over the place?
Well, of course it did. It always does.
Yeah.
It always does. But when you have a group of people who are determined to make it work, they find a way to condense and to, and to bring together. Because a lot of things are said, but they belong in an integrated package. They don't belong by themselves. You can't, like in anything, you can't say, "Well, you know, we have seven, 74 ideas." If you have 74 ideas for anything, you have nothing. You, you just have nothing.
Agreed.
And so, people understand that. And so, we say, "These are good ideas. We are trying to distill the most important things that our community in its broadest sense thinks." Now, best-case scenario, you've got three years to do this. The best thing to do is move as quickly as you can, to try to get to a point, we have those meetings, we have these ideas where you share this, people know what this is. And somewhere around January or February, you can put in place, "Here are the ideas, here are the five or six." In this case, we had six, and now we're down to four. Because they combine things. And they all say the same thing. "How about this?" And, "How about that? How about that?" And we said, "You can't do all of these things individually, you have to do them as a collective." And when people invest in other people and say, "We wanna hear what you think." And they really believe you wanna hear what you think, because they know that you have listened to this, and they maybe even find some examples of what you've done. Then, you're in a position to serve your community in the broadest sense now, well. That answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Someone else? I get paid by the question.
Nobody does. I have another one. In the process, so when you say that it's a...
I'm gonna sit down, no, I think I say I have to stand by the television.
When you're in the three-year...
Right, I have to stand by the television.
We can bring you a chair.
You can bring your chair, yeah, just take your chair, yeah, absolutely.
Even the little ones?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Just take the blue one.
That's what I'm gonna do. If I came in here a little earlier and I said those brown ones are a little too small. This gonna work?
Yeah, you can use, you can use Nicole's microphone.
Okay.
So, when you're saying it's a three-year, so as you're making the plan, you're implementing at the same time in those three years?
You're trying to give form to it. You're going to implement at the end of it, if not a little, a little sooner.
Of the three years?
Yeah, after three years. You're gonna start showing progress, you know, "We've, we've decided that the first place to do this is..." You know, "Here's the big statement of where we are with this. We wanna work on," just as an example, curriculum and instruction. All right, so, inside curriculum instruction are many different ideas. So, you wanna be able to get people to think and to understand that 70 ideas are not gonna work, we have to get down to four, or five, or six. So, let's try to group important things. And then, we will begin to work on it. And then, committees can do that in lots of different ways. They can, they can ask certain people, "Well, we would like you to explore this, and do this, and be able to come back and report. Somebody do this, and somebody do this." Not everything is a, is a group of 50. It's not. But it's always that open part of it, and everybody's encouraged to do it. That's what works best. And then, sometimes you find this isn't the way you really think you're gonna get the greatest benefit. So, you announce that, "We've decided to change and shift this, because we've looked at this." And you give reports along the way, some on the website, some on meetings. Whatever you can find as a way to say, "This is what we're doing. And the reason for this is we believe we can make our school district, as good as it is, better than it is." Because this is a world where things are moving so quickly, you wanna be able to equip young people, teachers, as well as parents and community, on what these challenges are.
Correct.
So, that's how that works. And it's open. And keep that in mind. Anybody who comes first is a, is a member until they quit. They are. It doesn't mean they have to be there all the time, but they're a member. No one is told you, not you. Now, there are some people who need to have more responsibility than others. Anything that anybody does always revolves around that. So long as that person, those people, are explaining to people and doing outreach and answering questions, then people are fine with that. Some people don't wanna do that, some people wanna do a lot. This is not about in, in, in what we did. And we started to do that, and I started to do that with, with the people in, in Flemington. Because they wanna get involved in strategic planning. And so, what we did there, I didn't, they wanted their new administration to do this. The administration decided that they wanted to pick somebody who had some experience to tell them, "How do you begin? And where do you go?" And, and, and so, we did a couple of examples and did things like that. The idea of seeking a better future is terrific, if you don't waste time. If you respect people's point of view. Then you have an opportunity to really do something, maybe bigger than you thought. And that's what we did in Nutley, and hopefully, that's what we're gonna do again. And that's what they're doing in, in Flemington. And I think they're done in, in some other places. Now, there are people who come in and they have a nice plan with all kinds of PowerPoint, stuff like that. I don't have any of that stuff. I just have, "Here is a way that I think this makes sense. Here is a way that I think you can engage people." And when you engage people, you engage your community regardless of what you're doing, good things usually happen. Most people are reasonable most of the time. Some people are never reasonable, we know that. But the people who have an opportunity to come and to listen and to ask questions and to suggest, when they have a strong sense that people have listened to them, they come back. And some of those ideas didn't come from the immediate group. It got bigger in another kind of way, when people said, "Aren't we really talking about this?" And then, people began to question one another. And as a facilitator, I'm not the only one who talks, and if it works well, I ask the questions, they talk, they talk to one another. And then, when they're getting near the end, I ask a question, "Is that really what you want? And how do you know that? And what's gonna give us..." That, that sort of perpetual questioning among people, all about the future of what you want. And like I told you, I get paid by the question, so, you know. Maybe that gentleman didn't see the fun in that.
That's why it's limited, our BA's watching us.
Yes.
His eye.
Michael, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Well, I'm fine. I know you a little bit from your days in Carney.
That's right.
And you have scars to show it, right?
Yes, he does.
We all do, don't we? We all do, we all do. Anything else?
No, thank you.
I think you explained it pretty well.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for waiting until we...
Yes, yes.
Not a problem, it was a pleasure. And then, some of the things that I heard in there were really flat-out extraordinary. Did I hear that the one kid was a state champion with the javelin? Yes. The state champion with the javelin? That's, that's unbelievable. And I don't know whether the next time he threw it, it fell on his foot. But that was a wonderful session. And it wasn't that long. I could tell that you had a big softball team, I could tell that, but shirts. And I wanted to say something about it. Did all of this work really well because of what you had on your shirts?
Yeah.
Didn't seem like you had to protect anything. It looks like the kids did very, very well. So, all that I wanted to do was to give you a perspective about how to do this. But to also encourage you that there are numbers of ways to do it. Step back, think about what you want to do, how you want to do it, the way you want to do it. And then deputize is a... Yeah, it's a strange word, but that's really what it is. Pick a group, start us, and give us a set of ideas in a month. Not four months, a month. And then you decide, now how do you want to go about doing this? Right? The gentleman in Flemington wanted me to help him get started. And I said, "I'll be glad to do that." I said, "But I'm gonna need people to come and we need to talk." He said, "Well, I'll get the whole board and we'll talk about that." And we started to do that. Gave him a couple of examples, and then they walked away and said, "You know, we did think about this and thought by that." And then they're germinating ideas, and then they get more people in it, and then you can go someplace. You also have to always have an ability to shut down certain things when it's running away. You don't want to have people talk about a whole wonderful batch of ideas that takes you a year and a half to get to the end of it. Because then you ain't gonna do anything. You're gonna have to say, "For this to work, we have to have six or seven really cogent ideas that we've developed." The facilitator should never develop that. Never. Ever. Ask the questions, that's a different story. Because great things happen when you get groups of people who ask questions of one another. Especially those people who understand very well. The best way to solve problems is not to invite everybody who thinks alike, but instead to invite people who have a different point of view. I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for this opportunity to speak with you.
No, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
I think we're done, sir. Take care.
Thank you, Dr.
Bye now.
Thank you.
More than welcome, and it was really a pleasure to meet you.
Same here.
Do I need to time you?
You're gonna have to be pageant. There's a lot of pages.
I think you're gonna be here.
And now you don't have anybody in the room.
And then there were none.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you for inviting him to come speak. We appreciate it, as we're trying to decide how we move forward with creating our strategic plan for the next few years.
This ties in a lot with your committee, right?
Certainly.
It could be.
Maybe we start with that committee.
Yeah, yeah. Like I see a lot of the conversations that you're starting to have and how it's developing is all...
Sorry to move it angel, please.
Sorry about that. Pretty good.
All right, to be further discussed.
Yes.
Moving on.
There is a superintendent's report?
I told you there was.
Why isn't it on the agenda?
It is now.
It is. It's there.
I'm just gonna start talking, okay?
Would you please, just go.
From the Office of the Superintendent, it doesn't say.
No, we're not there yet. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary. Under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B3?
So moved.
Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of May 22nd. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of May. And B3 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrages and expenditures. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Yes.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai?
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B4?
So moved.
Second.
Never mind, forget B4.
Forget B4.
That was my mistake, I forgot to delete that off.
We're just disorganized.
You had some week, huh?
Are we gonna eliminate the other ones before I say them?
Yeah, because I don't see the superintendent's report on here, I'm sorry. I didn't think so. Okay, cool.
Wow, clearly everybody's done for the school year.
It is June, isn't it?
Oh, one week. One week to go.
How's that B5 doing over there?
Do we have a B5?
Yeah.
Good.
I'm Elbingo soon. Under business, can I have a motion for B5 through... Oh my gosh.
Just keep going, just do them all. You got it.
B98, where is it?
B37.
Is it really?
Do it all.
Through B37. Anyone?
David, so moved.
Someone?
So moved, I'm sorry, I was looking at the list.
Did you find it?
No. I second it, so just start talking, because by the time we get done, I'm gonna be asking for breakfast.
Oh, gosh. All righty. B5 is a motion to approve joining the Union County Cooperative Pricing Agreement. B6 is a motion to approve the following tax requisition schedule for the 2018-19 school year. B7 is a motion to approve the Substitute Service LLC to provide calling, attendance, and reporting services for the 18-19 school year. B8 is a motion to approve AM Consultants Pine Brook, New Jersey to conduct the annual fixed asset inventory. B9 is a motion to approve the annual agreement with Genesis Educational Services for the 18-19 school year. B10 is a motion to approve AHRAS Consultants to provide the following for the 18-19 school year. B11 is a motion to approve NAETI to provide environmental consultant professional services for the 18-19 school year. B12 is a motion to approve the 2018-19 annual contract with the Northwest Evaluation Association. B13 is a motion to approve Handy Lift Service Company for the 18-19 school year. B14 is a motion to approve, oh, this one, the New Jersey Wild Geese Control to provide canine patrol for the 18-19 school year. B15 is to approve K12USA.com for the 18-19 school year. B16 is a motion to approve the 18-19 tuition rates for out-of-district students as follows. B17, plenty more to go, is a motion to approve Strauss S. May Associates School Policy and Regulation Consultants Contract Agreement for the 18-19 school year. B18 is a motion to approve the 18-19 Professional Services Contract with Vanguard Medical Group for the amount listed. B19 is a motion to approve Dial Pest Control. B20 is a motion to appoint Bollinger Specialty Group as our insurance carriers for student and athletic accident insurance coverage. B21 is a motion to approve Bollinger Specialty Group to offer voluntary student coverage. B22 is a motion to approve the 18-19 Annual Service Agreement with Frontline Technologies Group. B23 is a motion to approve the Annual Contract Support Agreement with Computer Solutions Inc., 18-19 school year. B24 is a motion to approve Phoenix Advisors for the 18-19 school year.
I think I see the...
B25. B25 is a motion to approve the following scholarship award winners, congratulations. B26 is a motion to approve the following tax shelter annuity companies. B27 is a motion to adopt the Uniform Minimum Chart of Accounts. B28 is a motion to authorize the Business Administrator/Board Secretary to release warrants for payments. B29 is a motion to approve the Cedar Grove Board of Education in compliance with the code acknowledges the following language on student records in policy 8330. B30 is a motion to approve the curriculum and textbooks for the 18-19 school year. B31, whereas the Cedar Grove Board of Education wishes to transfer unanticipated excess current year revenue or unexpended appropriations from the General Fund into a Capital Reserve Account. B32, whereas the Cedar Grove Board of Education wishes to transfer unanticipated excess current year revenue or unexpended appropriations from the General Fund into the Maintenance Reserve Account. B33, pursuant to PL 2015, Chapter 47, the Cedar Grove Board of Education intends to renew, award, or permit to expire the following contracts previously awarded by the Board of Education. That's a lot of contracts. B34, a motion to accept the generous donation from the North End FSA in the amount listed. B35 is a motion to approve Honeywell Building Systems and Services. B36 is a motion to approve Hague Service Corporation. And B37 is a motion to accept the generous donation listed from the below groups to be used exclusively for the lettering of the CGHS auditorium and gym. Thank you to those groups.
Yes.
Any discussion?
Nicole, this is not your husband, right?
No.
Okay, I'm just goofing around.
That's what I was thinking, yeah, yeah, yeah. It is, no. And you, I wouldn't have just said for B37, a huge shout-out to Music Matters, the All-School Council, the Project Graduation folks, and the Cedar Grove High School APT for giving us all that money to put the letters, the letters on the building, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Aye.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dai?
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent's Schools, is there a superintendent report? I'm...
Strangely enough, there is.
Rumor has it.
Rumor has it. I heard someone say...
Where am I putting that on here? S or...
Oh, yeah. S-O.
S1A.
Now, he's gotta even make it bigger, look at this, he's really getting...
There you go. Give him a break, he was a former science teacher.
Pushing the limits here of our capabilities. It's been a great year, hasn't it? It's been a great sweet year, I mean...
Fantastic.
Fantastic, talk fast, I know. It's been great. And so as always, as I do once a month, I wanted to recognize the Student of the Month at the high school. Arianna's a wonderful young man who's just an incredible artist. And, you know, I've enjoyed so much getting to know him and his creative pursuits. Lots of stuff going on at the high school, I thought I'd share a little bit of the driver's ad. They did participate in the You Got Brains program for several years now. And I thought I'd share that with you, and it's just great, great stuff. And if you would indulge me for a couple of moments, I'd like to show you some of the video that they made and submit it to the contest this year. These are some great pics from the ceremony. And I'll just play just a couple minutes of this and just give you a taste of it. It's also found on our YouTube channel if you want to watch the full video.
That's nice.
So they put these videos together as part of the competition, make the best team win, this was our submission.
T.I., he can't find his lecture.
Hello, Sharks, I'm New Jersey Governor Over. And I'm here to offer you free lunch and money dollars in tax revenue in exchange for legalizing marijuana.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Murphy here, and I would like to know why I should support your idea?
I will now pass out savings. New Jersey spends more than $125 million every year in taxpayer money for incarcerating those who are arrested, jailed, and/or brought through the court system for marijuana-related offenses.
Hi, I'm Lori, they call me the Queen of Tea each day. So you want marijuana to be legal in New Jersey altogether?
There are a lot of those in this discussion. If we don't legalize, some have mentioned we could decriminalize, meaning anything less than two ounces would be considered okay for those over 20. But that's just a step. We want to put dangerous dealers off the streets.
What would you use the money for?
I feel it's important to help our schools and fix our road system.
You realize this bill would have to pass through the state legislature first?
I do realize that, that's why I'm here. Recent research shows that around 60% of New Jersey voters would support legalization. Listen, studies show over 2.5 million ounces of weed are smoked illegally every year, right here in New Jersey. We could stand and get a piece of that pot if we taxed the legal sale of it until it's 200, 100, 300 million dollars.
One of our main concerns before we make decisions is the safety of our citizens. More importantly, those who use marijuana and get behind the wheel of a car.
We fear that many people believe it's safer to be high and drive rather than be drunk and drive. And that's scary. In fact, in the past 10 years, marijuana-related driving stops have risen while alcohol-going stops have only taken longer.
We are afraid that you might see a combination of marijuana and alcohol behind the wheel, is that something that's documented?
It is, Lori.
Drinking alcohol speeds the absorption of the THC, so yes, there is a big difference in driving ability if both drugs are used together and someone gets more worried.
So you get the idea, very timely topic, I think very tastefully done. You know, our kids are grappling with some very real, very authentic problems. As you know, our governor is trying to work his way through this problem as well along with our legislature. So if, again, you want to see the full video, check it out on our YouTube channel. Some announcements for our promotion and graduation exercises, mark your calendars, hope to see you there. It's a great time of year. How about the middle school, lots of great stuff going on there. They held their inaugural academically speaking competition there with our winners, Smurlin, Chikring, and Eustace. I'm gonna give a shout-out to them, great stuff. Let's hear a little bit more about that. So they have this contest, it's held at their school under the supervision of Mrs. Hill. It's like a Jeopardy-like type of competition, and you've got some really bright kids take part in this. But only, you know, only the best. Here they are. There's our girls here, and some of the non-winners, sorry, boys. What else is going on at the middle school? Well, we're very excited, Mr. Decourt, all of us, Mr. Lugameno, Mr. Dorf, about the addition of our new MakerBot Replicator Plus. I know this sounds like something out of Buck Rogers, the Jeffersons, huh? But just another 3D printer that's allowing us, our kids, to do even more and more effective 3D design. Really cool stuff. So we've got a pretty nice collection now of machines. Our kids are, you know, working with hands-on, pretty awesome. North End and South End, of course, as the end of the year draws near, field days, color runs, all these kinds of things. Sorry, the color run didn't make the presentation.
I know, it got cut.
You know, it got cut.
It happens.
It was a great time, we had a color run on Sunday, it was wonderful. But it's not all about color runs, there's pool parties, there's torch runs. It's just a great community of learning going on. And there we are at South End with the colors. I mean, it's all happening. Roy G. Biv motiert. The kids just had a great time, and it's fantastic electricity we're getting, we're throwing. Someone was saying maybe we should get some teachers to throw them up there as well, maybe the superintendent. What else here at North End? Question of plastic there, I don't know, but...
When I was a kid, I used to sit on the ground and get ants crawling on my legs, but apparently we don't do that anymore. But that, no, we don't, apparently. Are we okay with that? I just, I kid. Great day.
Get rid of the plastic.
Get rid of it. We bring that to the DAC committee, we'll talk about it. Just a great time had by all. I mean, look at their faces, I mean, what a great day. I don't see any plastic there, and I noticed kids sitting on the ground, I don't know.
That was just for lunch.
No phone calls, please, it's just for lunch, okay?
It was just for lunch.
Oh, we tease, we tease. And of course, we had our middle school drone come out, and we couldn't resist, but, you know, trying some fun things. Pretty cool.
Yes.
Pretty cool. And of course, last but not least, I would like to recognize our district's Teachers of the Year. Of course, we have Mrs. Carr from North End and Mr. DiStefano from the high school, Kristen Staunton from the middle school, and last but not least, Victoria Tedesco from South End. It's been a great year, folks, thank you. And as always, keep in touch with us here, there, wherever.
Is this a good time to plug the fact that tomorrow's the... Orientation for the middle school parents next year. Tomorrow, 6:30, middle school. For those of us who are going to middle school for fourth grade.
Actually, going there for fifth grade.
Fifth grade, I'm sorry, going from fourth to fifth.
Sixth grade at night or in the morning?
6:30 PM. We wouldn't want to wake you up that early, you know you need your beauty sleep.
They do the orientation in the gym?
Yes.
So where should I...
So where should I go?
Tomorrow's the day. I have to go.
Make it S1A.
Then, again, I could cheat and just ask for private two or something, but we'll be there.
Your daughter's going to want to go.
We're moving on.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, personnel. Can I have a motion for S1 through? My gosh. Um, S something? S26?
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to approve Colleen McElroy, high school teacher of resource. S2 is a motion to approve Diana Sandoval, high school Spanish teacher. S3 is a motion to approve Justin Bronner, middle school special ed teacher. S4 is a motion to accept the resignation of Kelly Batista, South End kindergarten teacher. S5 is a motion to accept the resignation of John Skankarella, high school bioscience teacher. S6 is a motion to approve summer work for the following guidance counselors at their per diem rate. S7 is a motion to reemploy and set the salary for Gianna Castelli, non-tenure teaching staff member. S8 is a motion to approve the following teachers to teach a sixth class at the high school. S9 is a motion to approve the following lunch age for the 18-19 school year.